Hi, we are here in session at this 2:02 PM, November 20th, 19, or 2019, wow. 2019, uh, this meeting is ordered. Commissioner Boyce on the phone. JJ is now with us this afternoon. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second is your chair.
Any further discussion? Roll please.
Commissioner Pash.
Aye.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Commissioner Boyce.
Yes.
Motion carried three to zero.
All right, moving on to number three, projects. We have the Curry Watershed Partnership. Ms. Timchek.
I think Leesel's gonna start us off. We have, we should have already. I was just in case, but I sent it to John last week.
Oh, well, so you need to PowerPoint up on the screen?
Yeah.
Do you know how to do that?
Do you have it or do you need it?
Way better if it's.
I know you're not here. Yeah, I already talked, yeah.
Are you live streaming while they're doing that, Commissioner? Are you live streaming?
Are you talking to me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
No, I'm, uh, I'm sitting in the car where it's quiet and, uh, you know, it's funny, uh, just a side note. A lot of people up here have been wearing Council hoes and I said, "Well, I've been saying, I thought the board sent you up here to make sure I was actually here and working."
Slideshow.
So, anyway, just having some fun there.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're getting ready to get started here. You just go to slideshow. Wow, that was a quicker way. See, you know the tricks.
I'm missing all my notes though.
All right.
Dang.
Okay.
That's all right.
When you make notes, you can watch them on here, but it's.
Ah, that's all right. I can just wing it.
Okay. I can just wing it. I didn't know that.
And you can use the keyboard there to switch if you want to.
Oh, oh, oh. This is how you go. Is it the up arrow, down arrow?
Yes, I think the side arrows. One of them.
Ooh, I'm just gonna, ooh, 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 good. Yes, good. All right. Got the technical taken care of. Yes, um, thank you very much for having us come. This is great. I know the councils need to, um, present every year and so I've tagged along. We're.
Pull that one microphone down to you so we can make sure. There you go.
Oh, here I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. This is Leesel Coleman. I'm the district manager for the Soil and Water Conservation District. I'm here with Kelly Timchek, the Lower Rogue Watershed Council Coordinator, and Miranda Gray, the South Coast Watershed Council Coordinator. Um, we all comprise the Curry Watershed's partnership. So who are we? Um, again, the Curry County Soil and Water Conservation District, local government, um, the South Coast Watershed Council, the Lower Rogue Watershed Council. We've been partnered together for 25 years. As of this past July, the district is the fiscal sponsor and the employer and the councils bring all this great awesomeness to the group. Um, we work together to improve ecological outcomes, inspire conservation and stewardship, and improve the economic and community well-being of Curry County. We do this, um, through two major branches of activity, um, education and restoration work. So, um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about our youth education program. Um, we have two people, Stacia Ryder and Kathy Bowden, um, are our education team right now. Um, we do work in, uh, this past year, we did plants and pollinators work, tree planting work, um, monarch waste stations. The Driftwood School planted 23 redwood trees cloned from ancient stumps. Riley Creek planted 53 native trees and shrubs. And we've created monarch waste stations in, I believe, all of the, uh, schools, um, throughout the county. This is very exciting.
I have a question about the ones that were cloned from the ancient tree subs. Is that, is that through the, um, Dave Millar program?
Yeah, I think they're called archangel trees. Yeah, yeah. So, um, a couple of years ago, we got a grant from the Gray Family Fund to do planning with the area schools to develop an outdoor school program. So we have launched that this year. Um, we had our first one. So we got, um, we're putting all sixth graders attending outdoor school during 2018-19. Um, and we call it the Seed to Summit Outdoor School Program. So we are rolling that out, um, in, in force now. So hopefully, moving forward, we'll be able to do much more of that and also be able to offer that to schools over in the valley and bring them over to this area. We also have a farm-to-school program. Kathy Bowden is the person who oversees that. Um, this past year, there were 61 garden lessons to 348 Curry kids, 35 health and science lessons to 209 Curry kids, and 39 food lessons to 249 Curry kids. Um, this is a great program. Kids get to go out on farm field tours. They've got school garden programs going on, um, and they learn all sorts of interesting scientific concepts. And also learn about growing food in our watersheds, how that works in our watersheds, how it impacts our watersheds, and learning about, you know, uh, the effects of eating food from far away versus eating food locally. Um, they also get an opportunity to share their understanding with the community and they go to civic groups to make presentations. Um, they learn about career opportunities. You'll see here on the left, they're meeting an actual honest-to-God fisherman, um, while eating tuna that came from his boat. They also learn about livestock, um, management, um, and they are learning how to cook. Um, so there's a lot of, like, life skills that we're developing and also exposing to, um, career opportunities. And at the end of the school year up in Driftwood, every year, they now do, um, a farm-to-school dinner. Um, it's been a sell-out the last two years, um, and they present all of their, uh, what they've learned over the course of the year at that dinner.
So is this just elementary schools you go to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe it's third through, third through sixth right now. Yeah.
I noticed a lot of those faces in there come to my ranch all the time for a lot of the same things.
Yeah.
Ah.
I am now gonna hand it off to Kelly, the ultimate authority on the Lower Rogue Council, so thank you.
It's a big intro. All right, thanks for having us here today. I appreciate it. Um, so she said earlier that we have an education and a restoration arm. Uh, that's sort of our big, broad categories and there are a lot of things that fit under restoration, um, like monitoring and riparian work, um, fish passage, all these sort of things fit in that arm. So I just wanted to quickly touch on some of the things we've done in the Lower Rogue over the last year and a lot of that has to do with, uh, monitoring fisheries and also other aquatic species in our watersheds. So, um, one thing we do each year is we'll put smolt traps. That's the trap on the left there and that's what we're looking at. Anything that's out migrating, generally, we're looking for, like, Coho and salmonids that are in the system, but we find all sorts of things. Um, so that's a yellow-legged frog there. That's a species of concern in Oregon. And then also a giant Pacific salamander is there in my hand, a little one. And then this is a big, big fat Coho. Um, he's just heading out to the ocean, you can see with his really bright silver color. Um, and these are all just out of Curry Creek, which is a creek that's just right up Jerry's Flat. It's a ditch, basically. It's amazing. And so what we use this information for is it leads us to restoration projects. So this was an area where we had a culvert that was overtopping and it was creating some impact in this large wetland area. And so through the information, then we ended up doing a culvert restoration project. So we took the culvert out. Fortunately, the landowner didn't actually even want anything back in, so we were able to totally pull that in general. And then we'll use, uh, same information like this. I'll go back and trap again next April and we'll see the impact. We'll kind of follow the effectiveness of the culvert, see if there's more numbers or not of fishery, fish there. And let's see here, I'm in control, aren't I? And the other thing we kind of are looking at going in the future is looking at macro invertebrates. If you guys don't know, the little, little bitty bugs that live in the river, in the creeks, that's what most of the fish are eating. And so macros can also tell you a lot about the health of a stream. And so we can do that in a really inexpensive way by going out and collecting macro invertebrates, sending them off, and then you kind of get this, um, list of what's in there and it will tell you about the healthier stream, whether temperatures are good, whether there's nutrients, chemicals, all those sort of things. Um, so what we're really focusing on right now is estuary restoration. We did a assessment in 2012 with some money from the EPA, um, where we did a big wetland assessment in the Rogue River and then we also did an estuary assessment of all sorts of things. Uh, vegetation, um, structure, depths, pools, salinity, all this sort of stuff, which led to a plan that we put out in 2015. And then in 2017, we applied for a technical assistance grant to now put in some large wood placements and remove some culverts in the God Wants Who Slew area. And then also, um, in the Indian Creek ponds that are kind of there, if you go down the Indian Creek Trail across from the cafe, there's a little, um, tidal, tidally connected pond area there where we're doing the work. And now we've applied for money in 2020 to actually implement the project. So it's a lot of wood and a lot of connection, doing some sloping of banks to increase the area available for juvenile salmon to be able to either A, come off in the winter when the river's really high. These are slow areas where little babies like to live, so they want it to be calm. Or B, this one in the slough is also a cold water refugia. So once the river gets hot in the summer, this thing is still pumping 50-degree ocean water in the middle of the slough. So it's a cold water spot where, again, those fish can get off and, you know, stay cold. Uh, and that, what we did in the, in the 2012 one was to identify our limiting factors, which were these reduced shallow water and backwater habitats. We have very few of them in the Rogue since we've got some jetty's now that kind of just funnel the river right out. Uh, the reduced food due to lack of macro detritus, that's like the things that come off of the trees. So there's not that much, um, debris input into the slough. And then the loss of connectivity and complexity. So that's what we're trying to address. My last slide here is another big community event. It's the Lower Rogue Watershed Council puts on the Rogue River Cleanup each year. And this year, we had 93 volunteers. We collected 15 cubic yards of trash. Uh, we cleared one acre of blackberries in the park here and then also Scotch broom on the mill bar. And then we gave barbecue lunch to everybody, had all sorts of activities. This time, we cleaned from the beach, South Beach, all the way up to Agnes, um, like a Cougar Lane, basically, is about how high it goes. Um, but we had Washa Shore join this year, so they took all the trash from the beach to create art with. And then we also had the GORS Action Group join us too, so we could kind of put a little bit more adult education up at the park as well. So we have this big gathering at Cosatina Campground, um, where the Forest Service and everybody comes out, have a lunch, have Smokey the Bear, and enjoy each other's company.
Good afternoon. Uh, thank you all for having us. I am Miranda Gray. I'm the coordinator for the South Coast Watershed Council, uh, which is all of the coastal estuaries, um, or watersheds, sorry, uh, south of Banden and all the way to the Winchuck River, but excluding the Lower Rogue Watershed. So a large amount of the restoration work that the council implemented this year was part of the Strategic Action Plan for Coho Salmon Recovery on the Elk River. This was many years in the making, but it was just published this year and it's available on our website at currywatersheds.org. Um, these, uh, larger watershed-scale efforts are a good way to gain momentum within a single watershed around this unifying objective, um, to help us leverage resources and generally accomplish more within a watershed. But, um, the projects that are being implemented are, um, are similar to the types of restoration that we do countywide. Um, so we, we did a few of those projects this summer and we'll be implementing more in the next two or three years. Other efforts across our service area, the council sat on a governor's response team after the Chetco Bar fire. And one of the priorities that was identified there was sediment abatement on the burned lands. So we completed a field assessment this summer, inventorying streams in those burned areas and identifying areas that we will likely be putting, uh, large wood to trap sediment next summer. Um, and then also just using that as an opportunity to make recommendations for how the council can be more effective at responding to private landowner, uh, needs post-fire, um, in the future. Uh, we also completed this habitat restoration at Salmon Run Golf Course in Brookings. Um, so this is looking at, uh, an old road crossing over Jack Creek, which is an important tributary to the Chetco River. Um, we pulled that road crossing and restored more natural flow to that creek. Um, and we've continued maintenance and monitoring at Soul of Engulch in the Sixes Estuary on Cape Blanco State Park. This is one of our larger restoration projects. And, uh, we continue to maintain it, um, to adaptively manage for those restoration objectives, but also to understand how effective, um, our common types of restoration actions actually are. And then, uh, similar to the Rogue River Cleanup event, we sponsored this annual, uh, Cherish the Chetco event in September with, uh, multiple other partners, but we had about 50 volunteers, um, 20 of which floated, uh, the river on kayaks and picked up trash in some more inaccessible places. Uh, we had, I think, eight other community partners help with shuttles and picking up trash in some of the bigger river bars. And then we had this great locally sourced lunch afterwards. I'm gonna talk a bit now about, uh, some of the efforts that span the partnership and not just the council. So, um, the partnership, uh, sits on this GORS Action Group gag, um, to manage, uh, GORS across the South Coast region. Uh, we, as a partnership, are focused, um, heavily in the Brookings Harbor area. Um, and it's also a large component of those, uh, Sixes and Elk River plans that I mentioned earlier, or the Elk River Plan. Uh, but our tactic is really to, uh, focus on these outlier sites, um, so that we can prevent larger infestations. Uh, we visited about 100 outlier sites this year, which was, uh, an equivalent of 10 acres visited and treated. And then second to GORS, um, on our, uh, major weed offender list is jubilode grass, um, which is, uh, you might know, uh, more commonly as, uh, pompous grass. Um, it spreads really quickly, uh, and it's also, uh, an extreme fire hazard, um, so it's high up there on our radar. Uh, Brookings Harbor is, is heavily invested in, um, in also controlling jubilode grass. Uh, so we've been working down there. Um, it's, uh, I would say doesn't quite have the disdain as GORS, so, um, awareness is also a major component of control. And then, uh, the Sixes Strategic Action Plan is very similar, um, in scope and concept as that Elk River Plan that I mentioned. Uh, we finalized this plan this year, um, and are starting to identify, um, projects and funding sources for those projects. But, um, essentially, it's directing a larger amount of money to this, uh, concentrated watershed and this concentrated time period, um, so that we can see, uh, greater ecological outcomes, um, within that time period. Uh, and I'll also just use this slide as an opportunity to mention the, the Pistol River, um, strategic plan that is, um, very much in its infancy, but some of you heard about that, uh, this morning at, um, during public testimony, during the public hearing. Um, that is another concentrated effort within the Pistol River watershed, um, that's, um, likely gonna pick up a lot of momentum, um, in the next year. And Leesel can speak more to the impacts of our partnership.
Well, since the district's the fiscal sponsor, I get to talk about the money. So, um, in this past year, um, we've expended $1,368,230. That is 100% grant funding. The district is not a taxing district. Um, as you can see, um, the bulk of that is restoration, technical assistance, and education. Um, and, uh, and then we've got a little bit of capacity money for the council coordinators, um, primarily, and, and then, of course, admin. Can't operate without admin. I'm admin. Although somebody informed me the other day that that part is, um, transparency and accountability. That's what I do. So, um, yeah.
How much is admin? 15,000 or 150?
156.
Yeah, so we run it about 14%.
12%.
Yeah, 12%. Yeah, kind of bounce around in there.
Roughly 12%.
Yeah.
I'm good with numbers too.
He's good with numbers.
I was just checking on you. Just checking.
Anyway, and the, one of the other great impacts is, um, we've gained state recognition and so I was actually invited to go to Washington DC this past spring with the executive director of OWEB. You'll see her over here in, on the left-hand photo. Um, I was invited to go and talk about primarily the Pacific Coast Salmon Recovery Fund, um, that is available to Oregon, California, Washington, Idaho, and Alaska. Um, and OWEB applies for those funds every biennium and they use that to, um, match to their state lottery dollars and expand the reach of restoration. So we went and we visited, um, six different congressional delegates, um, talked to aides there, and then we also met with agency heads from, uh, uh, seven federal partnerships. Uh, NOAA, NRCS, US Fish and Wildlife Service, um, I've kind of lost track. It was all in my notes. Um, yeah, but it was, it was so much talking and so much walking and it was completely fascinating. Um, and, uh, I'm just so grateful for all of these partners and it was wonderful to be able to share with them, like, how important this was, um, is to our area. I brought the local perspective by talking about the Sullivan Gulch project primarily and a little bit about the Lower Rogue slough work that's going on. Um, and so it was really nice to be able to share a little bit about how that money that everybody's, you know, voting for is actually going on the ground and what that looks like. So I showed him lots of great pictures of little tree tubes. Um, so, uh, that was super cool. And I know beyond a shadow of a doubt that it's our reputation as a partnership that, that garnered that invitation, so. Coming up in 2020, um, Rogue Estuary Restoration, as Kelly mentioned, um, Pistol River Outreach and Assessment. Uh, we're, uh, we've applied for funding to do a hydraulic modeling of Pistol River, um, to inform, uh, future decisions about activities down there. Um, Chetco Bar setup and abatement, as Miranda talked about. More outdoor school? Yay! Um, and we're also gonna be doing, um, some work on our public communication strategy. Um, we've kind of been hiding in the background, not really talking about ourselves a lot, except to you all, once a year. Um, so we wanna get better about letting people know. We don't wanna be the best kept secret anymore. So that's us.
Well, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask. First of all, you mentioned the, uh, the Coho and they're, they're pretty, in my opinion, getting to be pretty endangered almost. Is there been anyone, anyone looked at, um, like Lake Floris? Because I understand that used to be a perfect breeding, breeding grounds for Coho, bringing that back to a breeding grounds for Coho, because that lake was always, um, from what I've been told by people that have lived through all their lives, a great place for that years and years past.
Uh, you have to.
You have to come up to the mic, sorry. Has to be on the record.
So the question is if there's been any work done, uh, at Floris Lake and maybe the Floris Creek watershed more broadly? But yeah, we, um, the council actually has, uh, active, um, project going with the town of Langlois, um, to do some restoration actions on Floris Creek, not Floris Lake necessarily. Um, and we have historically done a lot of work down, uh, in the Floris Lake main stem and down on New River. Um, it's been kind of a tough system to work on and not, uh, not all of our restoration actions have taken hold. Um, so we're taking a step back and, um, similar to kind of the Pistol River Assessment, we've done, um, an assessment of, um, kind of channel change over time and how we can more strategically go about restoration, not, not so much on a piecemeal manner, but, um, at that larger watershed scale, which would include Floris Lake, yeah.
I have another question too, because as you probably know, we were, um, in Grants Pass a month ago and, um, we've talked a lot about the Rogue River, the enormity, uh, enorm amount of gravel in the Rogue, the Chetco, and, and we've heard people this morning in Pistol River as well. And do you, have you all come up with any kind of a plan on how you think we're gonna deal with that? I mean, it's having a huge impact on not only our economy, but it's having a huge impact on the fish. Um, not fishing, but the fish themselves. ODFW has verified that and, um, we are waiting for an answer from the Corps of Engineers on that. But has there been any, any talk amongst yourselves about that and how we're going to deal with, you know, the rivers? Um, I've had a couple of engineers that you may be familiar with. Um, Jack Aiken came down with Alex Campbell, who works for the governor, and said there's basically a quirk in the end of the Rogue River and some of these things need to be dealt with. Sorry. It's no longer a meandering of the river. It's something actually has to be done.
Uh, yeah, um, we, we've talked a little bit about how to, where our place is in these types of decisions. We've certainly talked about that. Um, we're not sure if we're more of a, like, a convener and an educator in these situations or, um, helping to put information out also, um, you know, any scientific information that's collected, things like that. Um, you know, there's differences of opinions all across the board of, of what that looks like and I'd be curious to see what ODFW said about the, the fisheries in the Rogue, because I hadn't heard that. But, um, yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's, um, I, I just think we're not really sure where we're gonna be on it yet. We, we've certainly have talked about it at the Watershed Council level and, um, you know, we're interacting with Frank and those guys too to chat about it. But I would just highly suggest that we really like the Pistol, like the Floris, you know, Floris, these are really big systems and very intricate. So I would beg that we would need to understand them a little bit more before we, uh, make any, like, big decisions about what it is, um, but make sure that we understand all the facts, all the impacts. Um, yeah, and try and look at it as a community, like, how we can, how we can do better at it.
Would you agree that you're seeing dwindling numbers? And I know the hatchery, um, has had some significant, significant problems. I believe they've lost about 30% of this year's smolt.
Talking about Lost Creek?
Yes, Lost.
Yeah.
Anyway, because of the gravel, because of the, you know, the temperatures warming, those kind of things, have you seen numbers declining? Wow.
Yeah, go for it. Uh, it's tis the season. Um, no, I mean, I personally haven't seen it in from my interactions with the ODFW office here in Gold Beach as well, um, and looking at the numbers and looking at historic numbers and the way that fish cycle. This was a lower year. I don't think that's a telltale sign of what's going on. Um, but again, this is my opinion, Commissioner Pash, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
That's all I had.
Nope, I'm good.
Boyce, you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we could, uh, just, we wanted to back a little bit to discuss some of the work that Watershed and the Board is, how they get their funds and, I couldn't hear, uh, real well, but, uh, Washington, California, I think, or Washington, Idaho, and Alaska, but just how that, you know, just a little more detail if you could on how that works on the one-on-one matching. That's, that's real important for Texas County, hopefully within a couple of months.
Oh, boy, I'm gonna have to, have to go back to May and remember all of the details on this. Um, yes, this, uh, the funds come as a result of the treaties with the Native Americans. Um, and it's part of the US, uh, requirement to, uh, to maintain the fisheries. So these federal funds are allocated, um, to be used for restoration work that benefits the fisheries in those five states. Um, and it used to be that there was a specific amount awarded to each state, but it has become a competitive process as well, although there's, uh, still a certain amount of, that's kind of identified, uh, for each state. So, um, every biennium, the, the states apply for money and they, they show what they've been doing with the money in the past and, and kind of give an idea of what they hope to do with it in the future. And, uh, and OWEB, of course, being the, the big, um, salmon agency in the, in the state, is the one that. And OWEB, of course, being the big salmon agency in the state, is the one that applies there. So, I think, did I answer your question, Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, very helpful. Remind me the official title of that process again?
It's the Pacific Coast Salmon Recovery Fund, and NOAA is the federal agency that's responsible for that.
Well, till you mention NOAA, I was doing really good, no kidding, but thank you, that's, yes, that's a title I remember. But I'm quite willing to pull it up there, much appreciated.
Yep.
Hey, Court, this is Kelly. Those are also those OWEB dollars, that's the same place that we're getting some of that, the Rogue Basin's getting that FIT money for the fire management, fuel breaks, those sort of things?
Yes, I was gonna reference that, but I was pretty sure that was the case in the past. So, Kelly, thank you very much, that's also really helpful.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to go to 3B, draft ordinance to incentivize workforce housing, Ms. Schmelzer?
Yes, so Representative Smith, about two years ago, was successful in getting a bill passed that would allow for tax abatement on workforce housing. And Council Huddle actually worked on an ordinance to, that we could discuss, to see if it's something that we want to do here in our county. No county or city, to my knowledge, has taken advantage of the opportunity yet, so we would be the first county in the state. Which has pros and cons, you know, there means it has been test-run somewhere else, but it definitely makes us more attractive, because it gives us an incentive other areas do not have. Council Huddle did put together the draft, you do have my comments on it in red. Mine, basic, my comments were minor. It was basically, should we have consistent definitions that the state uses? And should it apply to ADUs and things of that nature? But I think before we get into the, and Assessor Cullen had some comments as well that you received. I think before we get into the weeds on that, though, we just need to have a conversation about how the ordinance is run and basically the way that this would roll out to the public and how we would be able to offer the incentive. I can lead that conversation unless Council Huddle, unless you would want to lead that conversation.
Oh, I don't need to, I really just, again, tried to model this after, you know, I took, I did a lot of cutting and pasting of the language from the statute, and then, you know, just put it in our ordinance form.
So what did, so my understanding was when this bill was drafted, it was to replicate the enterprise zone process, which means that, and I'm very familiar with the enterprise zone process, so I'm gonna use that as the example. But if a business, if somebody comes in and they want to establish a machining shop, for example, what they do is you look at the value of the land at the time of the application is submitted for tax credits or tax abatement at that time. And then you look at, let's say you're eligible for the tax abatement for seven years. So you would look at what is the value of that property when it's first, when the application is made versus seven years at the end of the program. And it is not assessed any taxes in the interim between that point. So what you have to do is the taxing districts have to agree to forego those taxes during that period. Yes, they're not getting taxes as the project is commencing. However, at the end of the period of time, they get taxes on something that is developed. And it's the same way with the workforce housing. You know, we have properties right now which are not being developed at all and may not be developed. So what the districts are getting on that property stays relatively stagnant. With this, it would incentivize somebody to take that property and actually develop it, and then have those taxes abated until the project is done. So, usually when I see these type of programs, special districts have concerns or questions, but when they realize, in the long run, it gives them something that they're gonna be receiving more money from in the end, they usually come around and support it. I have not heard any comments, neither for or against, the proposal that we're discussing today. It is something that we'd want to make sure that the, if the board decides to go ahead with it, something we'd want to make sure our special districts are aware of. And they do get to weigh in on an application, so, you know, you don't just roll it out. When somebody applies for this, we still have to notify the districts.
So you said it's not being used in the state at all, at this point in time. I know it is being used, or something similar, in California. And that's how the Tolu' were able to build the low-income housing they were able to do there, down in Smith River, so.
That makes sense, sure.
I think it could be a win.
Well, I know.
A long-term win.
I know that, as I explained in our meeting earlier today, you know, I'm having conversations with the City of Brookings on some property down there and how we can get it developed, and the amount of housing that could go in there. We also have another property up in the Gold Beach area, where we've been discussing with somebody about a substantial amount of housing that could go in there. So it really, you know, there's definitely some benefits to the community. This ordinance here would apply to the unincorporated areas. Most of the housing that would benefit this would be in an incorporated area, so after we adopt it, hopefully the cities would adopt it as well. But we would certainly help them through that process, because it is a new process in the state of Oregon. Assessor Cullen, do you want to maybe go through some of your comments or concerns with it, so we can discuss those? And Commissioner Boyce is on the phone, so he might have some questions, too.
Sure, thank you, Jim Cullen, County Assessor. My biggest concern with this is the way that it's written up. It seems to put the responsibility for administering the exemption in, on the county assessor, when really, I would say, I don't know if you had the opportunity to look at my comments, but I would say that this exemption is a task-heavy exemption for the county or city governing bodies. Almost everything in the House bill is pointed at the county or city governing bodies, and there's really only three references to the assessor that I could see. So, one, you have to approve an ordinance with definitions, and then come up with an application for exemption. And then, on each of the applications, you have to give the assessor a resolution stating whether or not it's approved, and all of the other information that the assessor needs. And I outlined that information in the comments that I gave to you. And then, you know, at that point, the assessor makes the changes to the assessment role to exempt the properties. Another place that I'm not really agreeing with the way that it's put down here, and, you know, I had, I had to look at this. I mean, you really have to kind of go through these, and since we deal with other exemptions, we've got some background with this. But one of the things that you have to do is determine a schedule for the exemption that will tell people how long they might gain an exemption. And I think, as it's written, your, this ordinance contemplates that the exemption would be a percentage of the project for ten years. And that's not the way the House bill is written. It's written up as the percentage of the product, project that is rented to lower-income people will determine the number of years of the exemption. So, and it goes up to ten years. Since this will be a Board of Commissioners exemption, and it'll be up to your approval, I think that the application should be available at the county commissioner's office and on the county commissioner's website. I'm gonna go to page two of my comments, down towards the bottom, on the targeted comments. My second comment, there says Section 8.04, .040, subsection four. This section should be relabeled, not just subsection four, but subsection four, sub-A. I don't know if that's the way you actually put that in legalese, but I think you also need to add a section for B that says what my comment has there. I mean, that's really, that wording is taken pretty much directly out of the, of the House bill itself. My next comment, that the exemption would be granted up to a maximum of ten years, I already mentioned. The next comment after that, Section 8.04, .0703. I didn't see anywhere in the House bill where it would require the assessor to notify the district that there was an exemption granted under that. In fact, and as you all know, fifty-one percent of the districts are gonna know about it anyway, because they have to approve it in the first place. Unless this is a FASB requirement, in which case, you know, whichever governing body it is, has to notify the assessor that it's a FASB requirement. And then my last comment there, on Section 8.040902. I think you just maybe are referring to the wrong section. And rather than 8.04050, it should be 8.04060 instead, and that there should be a sub-two as well. Well, in fact, I think that is stated incorrectly in the ordinance. Let me go to Section 14A of the House bill, which is what I mentioned before, that this isn't a, a number of years exemption, it's a percentage of the complex, or a percentage of the value exemption, for ten years. So, you know, some of this stuff is probably not really easy to get across to you just in a workshop, unless you've been through this and really taken a look at my comments. But the main thing is, if you do an ordinance for this, I, you know, just according to the House bill, this is a task-heavy ordinance for the county commissioners or the city governing bodies. And then, once you approve a project, you just inform the assessor, and we put the exemption on. If it becomes disqualified for any reason from the exemption, we take the disqualification off, and then possibly levy a tax for the number of years that it's been in this exemption. You're still using the word abatement, Julian. This is an exemption, not an abatement.
You know, I thought I was using exemption, and I thought you had me change it to abatement. So, when I started talking, I looked at the memo, and it said abatement, so I'm like, oh, okay, call it abatement. But I really thought it was an exemption.
Oh, okay.
So we have it, it is an exemption.
It is an exemption, yes.
Right. We'll make sure we get that right on the next time we bring this forward.
You know, that's the basics of my comments, unless you have any questions about any of this that I have here. I mean, I know that there's a lot more notes there. And if I actually go to the draft copy of your ordinance, I've got even more notes there. But I'd, you know, I'd be happy to work with whomever to get the wording right.
I'm just kind of looking at the big picture here. We need some housing here in Curry County, low cost. One way to get developers to come and give them incentive to come and build is through tax incentives. Okay, somehow, I think the verbiage and all of that can be worked out, so that something like this can go through. I think, long-term, we're gonna be better off financially by doing it. So, that's my two cents. We can, you know, dig into the verbiage later in the details, but overall, I think it's a good thing.
Well, I like going over the words in the workshop to, you know, just make sure everyone's on the same page. But, and it's been very helpful.
Rob Foster is here from the Housing Task Force. Do you have anything to add at all?
Hi, Rob Foster, the Curry Housing Task Force. My main comments were just to say that we're encouraged to see the county continue to tackle workforce housing. As Commissioner Gold just mentioned, workforce housing in particular is a tough nut to crack because of making it, there's not the programs available to people in the workforce housing category that there are for people in the affordable, supportive category as far as, you know, supplements to their housing costs, that kind of thing. So being creative in the area of workforce housing is really important. How do you get people to come in and actually develop? And how do you make the numbers actually pencil out, so that they, that they're incentivized to actually do the, do the development? So I think these kind of creative solutions are necessary and really helpful. And as the task force, you know, we're continuing to want to be a part and the support of what the county is trying to do, and especially to catalyze any partnerships that might be to the advantage of the whole community. So, that's really my only comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Boyce, did you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate that. You know, just listening to Assessor Cullen, and then what Rob Foster just had to say. Yeah, that, you know, the long-term outlook here is how can we solve some of the problems that we have? And I really appreciate Director Schmelzer following through with this whole process. It's quite easy, as we know, to follow through with that bill and make work specific to Curry County. Although I would like to ask the board down the road, if we can approve this through an ordinance, to consider sending along to the cities. Just reminder, join in, join in, you know. And I sense in the room there, especially with President Page, Director Schmelzer, and the comments that Assessor Cullen had, that they're, you know, I'm only here with you by audio, but I sense that there's, there's an interest and enthusiasm to go ahead and move forward somehow. And just so here's what I want to, want to offer, and maybe a question to Ms. Schmelzer. We have someone in the county that's really followed this close, and that's also close, is Planning Director Rocket, and meeting with her, and came across this Friday night, Director Schmelzer. They had a lot of comments, and different, and not specific to this bill, but other bills that could come down to the legislature that could help just particular rural counties. Director Schmelzer, if we had that bill, and we could amend it or refine it, would it make your job easier, would it make more sense to you? Would it answer some of Assessor Cullen's concerns, clarification, et cetera? If we were to just kind of, kind of go down, go in that direction and try and maybe, maybe we need to refine that bill, and it would be, the bottom line again is, we need incentive for people to offer homes to people through the landwork process. So, is there a way you might want to recommend that we try at least to refine that?
That's a loaded question. You know, it's really hard to tell legislators whether, I'll leave it at this. I think, I think most bills have room for improvement on them. I think we learn as we go through them. I think it has been a challenge to work with. I'm grateful Council Huddle was able to dig in and put together the draft that we have. I think we're not gonna know exactly what improvements need to be made to it until we actually work through the entire process. I would say that if the board's okay with it, you know, there's some questions I have that I'd like direction from the board today on. And then if they're okay with it, you know, I'd be willing to sit with Council Huddle and Assessor Cullen, and even perhaps Mr. Foster, and refine it a little bit, so we have something that we can bring forward for a first reading.
Can you, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, can you, uh, address Assessor Cullen's concerns, how, you know, he already mentioned, uh, have that application on the county website, make it make it part of the board's responsibility if people apply there? What's your thoughts on that? And I've not talked to Assessor Cullen about this, but, uh, wonder if there's a way to, uh, make it simpler, better, et cetera.
Well, I can answer that. So normally, this would go to your housing coordinator or housing person. We don't have that. Um, I guess, I guess, I guess the application could go to, I hate to say it, um, the Economic Development Coordinator sent us for workforce housing, and, uh, the application could start there, and then it could get routed out where it needs to go from that point.
Okay, so if we do get that, thanks for bringing up the housing coordination position that we, that it looks like we're gonna have it be combined for Kus County. So do you see that as a, uh, a good approach, or would if that person was in Kus County three days a week, Curry County two days a week, I mean, would that be workable if if we wanted to the, through the housing coordinator staff?
Well, I think it would work, I would think it would work provided that person, um, knows enough about all the programs available in each of the counties. I mean, this program would be unique to Curry County. It would not, um, be in Kus County unless Kus, of course, decides to adopt it, but yes, I do think that person could run the program. Um, I think it's a lot, one of the challenges I see is when you have people that don't work for the county actually trying to maneuver the county process, sometimes they end up creating an awful lot of work for county employees. And I'm just trying to think, for example, working with the special districts, they don't have access to that data, so now they're relying on the assessor or, um, the treasurer or someone else to get them that data. Um, they're constantly asking them for updated data. Sometimes that's easier to actually have that in-house, some of those processes.
Well, you and I are certainly in agreement there, but I think, uh, I'm reasonably confident that through neighborhood work, um, well, we're gonna have a combined housing coordinator that is gonna be funded through that organization, and, you know, my my vision, and I'm not being overly optimistic, but I I think it's, uh, a version of, you know, a possibility. Um, I think we would, like I said, two days a week to have potential, uh, property owners come in and and, uh, visit the county and say, here's the two days a week that that you could apply and get all the information you need, plus our website. So, uh, hopefully that's a little bit workable in the future and fairly, uh, the near future.
I do think that the matter of who receives the application is actually very, um, minor at this point. That's something we can easily work through, and of course, if there is somebody hired for that position, we can certainly transfer things at that time. Um, there are some bigger questions I think we need answered first, and that is, you know, the, how the program applies. For example, um, when we're looking at workforce housing, would it include such things as managers' quarters? Would it include such things as ADUs and things of that nature? Those are some of the questions that I, um, have concerns about with the ordinance and the direction we wanna go. I mean, staff could write it the way they want it, they think it should go. Um, I just don't wanna be re redoing it a couple times. I'd rather have the direction up front.
Very good. I'm gonna, uh, if I may, Mr. Chair, thank you again for recognizing me, and I've got another meeting, please excuse me, hanging up here. Thank you all for putting that with me on the phone today.
Thank you.
See you, Commissioner.
David Barnes, public comment?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner David Barnes. Um, I'm hearing an awful lot of work going into this, but the Board of Commissioners does not have final say on this. Final say is granted by fifty-one cents on every tax dollar that comes in. Districts that combine to give you that. Have you sent out a questionnaire to the districts whether they would be favorable for this? I noticed there's no mechanism by how a district decides whether it agrees to grant this exemption. Um, from what I've seen, it appears to be on each individual property, they would have to vote on it, but I'd be curious to know upfront whether the school in in Cold Beach would be willing to give up all of the additional tax money. They're going to get an additional students from this, would they be willing to give up the additional tax money that that goes along with it? And before you spend a whole lot of more time, you know, I would think that would be the first question that would need to be answered.
I can answer that. So, um, no, we have not. Um, what we wanna do is know what we wanna ask them first, and at this point, we don't know what we wanna ask them because we don't know, um, will it apply to managers' quarters? Would it apply to ADUs? Will it apply to tenants? Will it apply to people that lease their property? Or is it just for owner-occupied properties? So I think we need to have our ducks in a row before we go to the special districts and ask, actually ask them, uh, for their support. Because I think it would be diff, we have, I mean, we'd be going to, what, forty-two special districts without a uniform message to all of them. I'd rather know exactly what we're gonna ask and then go out and have the workshop with them and and share that information.
Okay, you know, I, all right, I I think that it, okay, I'd just advise doing early in the process so you don't find out a month and a half from now, if you've, after you've put in hundreds of hours of of time on it, that that all of the schools say no, and you're not gonna get your fifty-one percent, your fifty-one cents, no matter what happens. So it just, you know, that's the way it's written, that that's the way the bill out of Salem is written. So, you know, I'm just, just wanna voice my concern about that.
Sure. My understanding is the way it's written, that it's fifty per, fifty-one percent of the taxing districts. So if a developer is proposing a project on parcel A, you look at the districts that that cover that parcel, and half of those districts have to agree to it.
No.
That's the way I believe our ordinance is written.
The ordinance may be written that way, but the twenty, what's it, twenty-three seventy-three is, is written that it's fifty-one cents of the taxing dollar, not fifty-one percent of your dist, then, if you have seven districts control my house, four of them voting yes, don't, don't get, don't win. It's four of them whose combined payment is fifty-one cents of every tax dollar.
And we can look at that closer, and that may be one of those amendments that Commissioner Boyce was asking about.
Okay.
Because if the intent was to replicate the existing, um, tax incentive program that's out there for business, it would be fifty-one percent of the taxing, the taxing districts.
Okay.
Not the actual dollar. So we can check into that further.
Yeah, you know, I I didn't bring it with me, but I'm certain that that's the way it is written.
That's a, and I I know you've brought that up before, so that's a great reminder for us to check that out.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Gold, did you have something else?
I was just gonna say, those properties, when they're, they're not making much tax right now because they're undeveloped, and it's gonna take a while to get them developed. So that's why I think it could be a plus, but David's got some good points about.
I know it's very common for for cities and counties to offer incentives to business to come in and and build in their areas.
Mr. Cullen was actually reading it as a long past. It says, "When combined with the rate of taxation equals fifty-one percent or more of the total combined tac, rate of taxation on the eligible rental property." And it does specify it's for rental only.
Right. I mean, that's right in the bill. It says eligible rental property means newly or rehabilitated or constructed multi-unit rental housing. So that's what that is, but then, yeah, the fifty-one percent or more of the total combined rate of taxation on the eligible rental property is what's in the twenty-three seventy-seven. And then if you go down to, um, what, uh, when we say people will qualify, like I said, we, um, fifty-one percent or more of the total combined rate of taxation on the eligible rental property. Again, I really just tried to cut and paste the words from the twenty-three seventy-seven as much as possible, so I, I think the formulas in our order ordinance mirror the language of the twenty-three seventy-seven, so, um, but Assessor Cullen's point, I think, if I'm not mistaken, and when I drafted this ordinance, I, I compared, I I borrowed from some Department of Revenue materials, and then around here, I was trying to figure out who would process these applications, and I thought, well, if Department of Revenue processes tax-exempt applications for the state, then the assessor is more or less our Department of Revenue, and so I thought he would process the applications. However, he did point out to me that in subsection two, sub five of the, or section two, subsection five of of the actual twenty-three seventy-seven, it says, "If the property qualifies for the exemption, after looking at the application and the application meets the requirements, the governing body shall adopt a resolution approving the application and notify the assessor." So what Assessor Cullen pointed out to me is really he is taking direction from the governing body, so it doesn't necessarily make sense that he make the decision and present it to him. He is on the receiving end, not the processing end, was kind of the conversation we had. So, yeah, then it comes down to who does it, and would it be our housing coordinator? Would it be our economic development director, since this is an economic development-related, um, item, even though it's also a housing-related item? So, right, who who around here will do the application, the processing, and whatnot?
So is there some provision in there, a number of years or whatever, that those units, whatever are built, can then become owner instead of rentals? Cause I know down in California, that's what they do.
I I think, I think, um, the, as Mr. Barnes pointed out, and it says in here, it says the, their rental properties is who gets the qualification for, and they have to, they have to have a certain percentage of their units, um, and so they always must maintain the qualification under their application for the entire time of their exemption, so, and it's only for rentals. So I think if they, they can only turn, they can only turn to ownership after they've used up the exemption.
Okay.
They don't have to apply for the full ten years, they could apply for five years.
Well, again, and and this is where I, the formula of whether they get ten years or not, I mean, it says, "We must establish a schedule," and it says, "Based on," and Jim's getting up, I'm glad, the assessor, uh, because it, it's a thick sentence. Here's what it says, "The ordinance that we adopt must establish a schedule in which the number of consecutive property tax years for which the exemption is granted increases directly with the percentage of units constituting eligible rental property that are rented to households." So we have to come up with a formula to say, if you have, you know, twenty percent of your units that are at or below one hundred and twenty percent of the income, then you get ten years. If you have seven percent, you get one, I I don't know, is that, but Jim?
Yeah, you could come up with a schedule in this ordinance.
Right, it's, it's, we have to, actually, and and that's where, uh, this is subs, this is section one, sub four, sub A, and Jim, why don't you go ahead and explain it better than I just did there?
I'm not sure I'll explain it better than you did, but I mean, that's, let's take a, let's take an example, uh, multi-unit apartment complex, say it's got ten units, and let's say it's got three units that qualify for this program. Then my reading of this would mean that, so that's thirty percent, thirty percent of the ten years is three years. Uh, my reading of that is the whole complex would would be exempt for three years.
Not just those units?
Not just those units.
I agree with, I agree with the assessor.
The only question I have is, could we, it says, "We have to come up with our own schedule."
Mm-hmm.
Could we say, you know, one unit gives you three years, two units gives you six years, and three units?
Just like you said, you come up with your own schedule, so.
Right, so, uh, we, I mean, I'm wondering if we could say one uni, as long as you have one unit, your whole project gets ten, ten years exemption. Uh, and then someone else also had a question in, uh, whether, whether, because this law sunsets in twenty-twenty-seven, and we're already at, you know, we're, we're, we're within a ten-year period there, so we couldn't give a ten-year exemption, but I believe the very following section after that sunset date says, "Notwithstanding the sunset date, if you're granted the exemption under an ordinance before the sunset date, then you continue to receive it for the whole time you're, you're running." So I think, I think it's, you got the ten-year window to get this, and once you get it, you get all the.
So if you qualify in twenty-twenty-six, you have it exempt till twenty-thirty-five?
For another ten years, potentially, yes. I I, that's the way I read, that's, that's what I see the intent there, and I think that's how we, we've, I I wrote our act, or our, our ordinance. But, yeah, this ordinance was, um, you know, it was really to try to just get the ball rolling or keep the ball rolling and to start the conversation, and I'm happy to work with anybody who's got anything to input to it to make it better.
Commissioner Gold?
I think when we set up the schedule, I think we'd be doing better using percentages of low-income rentals, simply because if you had someone who built, say, a hundred-unit, uh, place where there were a hundred units, and they put in one, and you give them three years for the one on the whole thing, I don't, I think it would be better doing percents.
Yeah, that's kind of an exception you can drive a truck through, isn't it? They're getting a big tax break for only giving one unit, yeah.
Let me ask you a question on this, um, the legality of it, and either of you may know this, but could we make it that they could, or or is it legal for them to opt out? Let's say they're given thirty percent for three years or whatever, or however you're gonna work that out, but let's say in a year, they wanna reinvest that money, they've got an opportunity to reinvest that money in another ten units.
Pay all back taxes.
So they can sell that uni, opt out after one year, so all they've actually gained is the one year of tax breaks. They can opt out and sell off the units, recoup that money, and then rebuild a new, the next set of units.
So the way I read this House bill is, if they, if only the one unit out of, you know, however many qualifies, and we give them the tax break for one or however many years it is, and then they sell it, and if that following year after the sale, if the property becomes ineligible for the exemption, then we go back and collect the back taxes on it.
Yeah, what it says is if, if they, if it's ever determined after granting the exemption that they, that they no longer qualify, um, then, uh, you collect the same manner as real property tax and amount equal to the tax that would have been due on the property had it not been exempt for each of the years during which it was. So, and so, um, and then it also says, "The assessment tax rolls shall show a potential additional tax liability for each eligible rental property granted." But I, I think, um.
Language is coming straight out of the statutes for like farm and forest lands.
You bet, yep, so anyhow, um, but I I still think a person who gets this could, could sell the property to someone else, but that buyer, the buyer then would just be making the choice whether they wanna, you know, continue with the exemption or just pay the back taxes.
Pay the back taxes.
Okay, that's all I had.
Is there a direction for staff on next steps on this? Do you want us to bring you back something for adoption? Do you want us to make the changes that were discussed by the assessor or get some definitions by the director and?
Well, how about clarifying the language some, redoing it and clarifying the language on it some, so that it's, it's more defined?
I don't think this is an insurmountable problem to get to where I think you wanna be from here. And what I would say to Ms. Smelter is that owner-occupied units or ADUs probably don't qualify, because I mean, we're talking about multi-unit residential.
Um, right, and that's why I think we need to put those type of, address those with our definitions. So I, and I think we should.
And I think, I think there's a lot of other definitions that we still need to address. I mean, one, one being the schedule, um, other cond- conditions of improve, of approve, for approval. Um, actually, most of the things that I'm thinking of are on the second page of my comments there, so, and then you're gonna have to come up with things like, uh, what you mean by median, or or by whatever the median income is gonna be, and how that might impact the rent.
Yeah, and for those, for the definitions, my recommendation was we just use what the state is using on their program. So we're using consistent language so that if a developer is working with the state on a program versus Curry County, they're using the same language. They know that we're using, we're referring to the same terms.
And you had about a hundred and twenty pages worth of state stuff that I didn't read through.
Well.
So I'll leave it up to you to pick those out.
Only the first couple, yeah, only the first couple pages were definitions, the rest of them was the state's argument for why we need to provide more housing, things of that nature.
The state's arguing with us why we need to provide more housing?
No, 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 no.
They're justifying.
The state agrees we need to, as a state, we need to have more housing. If the, so I guess if the board would be okay with it, um, Jim, John, and I would just continue to work on this and bring something back to another workshop or meeting?
Why don't we try one more workshop with it, because it's got so much language in it?
Okay. Rob, would you be willing to help with that?
Sure.
Dave? All right, we're gonna give it to you to review it.
If you haven't had the opportunity to read through the actual House bill itself, and it sounds like you have, Commissioner Posh, I mean, it, I think it's useful to be able to read through that, so.
Right.
When we come to another workshop, we can follow along.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jim.
Anything further? This meeting is adjourned.
Does that say three twelve?
Three twelve, yes. 312, yes.